If we can get started, please. Thank you for waiting for us. I know a lot of people had trouble finding some parking in the lot. I call to order this meeting of the Forest Hills Branding and Mascot Committee, June 12th, 2018, 7:09 PM. If you all would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please make sure you know where the exits are. They're as you came in on both sides of the room. There's also an exit over here. This is our fourth meeting of the Branding and Mascot Committee. This meeting was formed by the Board of Education and is subject to most of the same rules as are a Board of Education meeting. It's a meeting held in public, but it is not a public meeting. We are subject to Ohio's Sunshine Law. I'd like to review with you kind of the ground rules for the meeting, much as I have in our prior meetings. We're here to discuss the issue of the Anderson High School branding and logo. While it is a public meeting, we're not going to have public participation this evening. The Board of Education will continue to include public commentary on its agenda at its regularly scheduled meetings, much as we have in the past. Tonight, the committee will be discussing the issues before it. Respectfully, we'll not tolerate interruptions from the audience. Please, no clapping or shouts of either approval or disapproval. We request no interruptions of any type. It'll allow us to get our work done this evening. As many of you know, I'm Jim Frumman. I'm the Chair of the Committee. It is my intention to guide, but not control, the meeting. I expect full committee participation, as we've had in the past. And a reminder, again, as I have done in earlier meetings, please be respectful, please be civil. This is a great community. We're each other's neighbors. We're each other's friends. While this is a sensitive issue, we're aware the emotions are high. We still need to be respectful of each other and each other's opinions. Let's treat each other right. Reasonable people can disagree respectfully. Please encourage your friends to do likewise. Here's what I expect for this evening. I'm going to kind of summarize some of our prior meetings, not in any meaningful detail, but just to remind people where we've been in the past. There's some work that some of our committee members have done since we were last together. I'll ask for reports from them. We'll then have committee discussion, and it is our hope to reach a recommendation from the committee this evening. So let's start by summarizing prior meetings. As indicated, this is the fourth meeting. The first meeting was on April 2nd. We discussed briefly the background and the issue before us. We discussed the committee's role. Each committee member had some preliminary remarks. We discussed process and timing. And then we had a general discussion of the issue before the committee. For those of you that were here, you'll recall there were some themes that emerged. Not decisions, just themes. And committee members, I ask your indulgence. If I summarize something incorrectly, I'm sure you won't be shy about correcting me. Please do. It's not my intention to misstate anything. I merely want to remind everyone where we've been. One theme that we had is if there is a change, we seem to have some consensus that we should find a way to preserve as much of the history and tradition as possible. Another theme was an overall concern about the cost of any change and how it would be funded. A third theme was if there was a change, there was discussion that maintaining the colors would help preserve some of the history and tradition, and it would also be more cost-effective. And then another theme we had was we should expand the Native American education in our curriculum. Ms. Barber will have some discussion on that. We assigned some work to our committee members, and the committee members did that work and reported back to us at the second meeting. The second meeting was on April 16th. We received the reports from our committee members on the assignments that were made to them. We had some general discussion, and we did reach an agreement that if we had a recommendation, at the very least, that recommendation would be to maintain the school colors. We agreed at our April 16th meeting that we would have a separate meeting that would include nothing but public commentary, and that, of course, was our third meeting, right here in this same room. Where on April 30th, we had two hours of public commentary that gave us time for a full 50 speakers, 25 from each side, and we thank you all for your participation. Which, of course, brings us to this evening's meeting. So if we can get started, maybe we can hear from the people that have done some work since our last meeting. Randy, do you care to start us off?
Sure.
And watch the microphone so everybody can hear you.
At our last meeting, actually, that was the meeting where we took testimony, and there were a number of things that came up, and there were some questions that came up and some opinions that were shared. And we talked about the opportunity -- we didn't do any rebuttal at that time, but we talked about the opportunity to respond to some of those questions and comments that were made. There were four topics that I want to touch on. One of them was there was concern that the logo and branding committee was a distraction to the school district operation. And at this point, no one in the district office is working on the nickname or the logo issue. This has not taken time or any resources away from the normal district operation. Matter of fact, I don't believe we have any administrators even here this evening. So just to be clear, there's no effort or time, money, or otherwise that's been invested in this by the district office, other than the time of the committee members. The second thing, there was some concern about the timing of the construction projects, even though that really doesn't have a whole lot to do with the nickname. Nevertheless, that was brought up as an issue, and we wanted to set the record straight on that. At this point, six elementary school renovation projects are complete. The new elementary building was replaced. The old Wilson Building, that's 100% complete at this time. Yes, it created some challenges to do remodeling during a year, but every principal will tell you it was worth the inconvenience to have virtually all new buildings on the inside. All the improvements at Nagel are complete. Here we are. Turpin was scheduled to start in August of 2016, and it started on time. Renovations at Turpin are running ahead of schedule. If it stays on the current schedule, Turpin will be completed in the winter of 2018-19 school year. Anderson. The Anderson construction was also originally planned to start in August of 2016. However, the Board was presented with an opportunity to have a new Anderson built at Beach Acres and sell the current Anderson High School and property. Investigating this opportunity delayed the entire Anderson renovation project by approximately six months. That time, the Board felt that the opportunity was so important, it was such a huge potential opportunity, that we invested the time to thoroughly research the plan. Ultimately, the project was found to be too risky, and at this point, hindsight, everybody, I think, agrees with that who was involved with it. Those seven months were very costly. At the same time, the economy was improving, causing construction prices to increase. Cincinnati was saturated with construction projects, causing fewer companies to bid on the Anderson project. Plenty of work, not enough workers. Earlier project bids came in at about 95% of projected costs, and the Anderson bid came in slightly above 100% of the projected cost. The building would cost more, and the completion date would be seven months later than Turpin. The third issue that was questioned was safety. There's been a lot of work done, especially in the past three years, on safety at all the buildings. All of our buildings now include a security vestibule with a double-door locking system. There've been upgrades to the video surveillance that will allow 9/11 personnel to monitor activities in real time. Staff have keyless entry systems, emergency panic buttons. Additionally, the buildings have safety teams. We've had a lot of activity going on there. We conduct regular, annual mandated police fire and EMT drills. There's a whole list more, and I won't go into that. The fourth area was cost of construction. We received many questions about the actual cost of the renovations and construction projects. During public input, we heard some opinions, even some statements that were simply not accurate. Here are some of the facts about renovation and construction costs for the nine projects in the Forest Hill School District. First, anytime you do renovations, there are always unknowns that you must plan for. From the onset, the Board realized that approximately 3% for new construction and 4% for renovation would be realized. There are usually more unknowns when renovating versus new construction. That's why the renovation factor is greater at the new construction, meaning Wilson, than it was at the renovation. But sure enough, that's the way it played out. Of the seven completed projects, some of our projects came in under projection, some were over, and one was almost exactly a projection. I've got a document that was updated just this morning, and let me just run through this really quickly. Let's see. Air came in at 3% over. Nagel was 6.9% under. Maddox was 8% over. Wilson was 2.1% under, and that was a new construction project. Bursar Elementary was over by 3.4%. Summit was under -- actually, Summit came in almost exactly on projection. And Sherwood was over by 6%. At this point, Anderson has only spent about 60% of their budget, and Turpin has spent about 88%. So any thought that we are wildly overspent on the budget is just not accurate. So we wanted to share that with everybody, just to set the record straight, exactly where we were with our renovation costs. And again, it had very little to do with our nickname, but it was raised as a point, and so we wanted to simply clear the air and make sure everybody was aware of what the facts were. That's all I have, unless you have any questions. Anybody on the committee has any questions?
Thank you. Elizabeth, you had some information on the Native American curriculum?
I did. So you may remember in the first meeting, one of the things I brought up was that I always wanted to bring this back around to education, that really, at the bottom line, to me, this has to do with what are we teaching our kids about history and character and culture? So that's what we're here for. We're educators. And so there were some questions about what we currently teach our kids, Native American history, and so I reached out to Natasha Adams in our curriculum department and gave her the very bold request of, can you please share with the committee what we teach our kids? And our curriculum department is incredible, as you all know, and they took several weeks and they dug through the textbooks and photocopied pages from 4th grade, 5th grade, 8th grade, and then U.S. History. That's what we were trying to hook up on the projector, is I really wanted to walk you all through what's in the textbooks. So some of you who have kids in the schools see this, and you have access to it. My kids are young, so they're not there yet. We start teaching it in 4th grade, and I'm just going to go from memory, and you guys can interject if you remember anything that I don't. But there's history in there. There is a lot of the negative Native American history stuff in there, but there's also a lot of the bravery stuff in there. I mean, you do get pieces of that. There's a lot of culture stuff in there. They talk about how the whites treated Native Americans. I was pretty comfortable with what we're teaching, speaking for myself. And the reason that I thought it was important that this committee talked about that is because it's been suggested that we add curriculum, that whatever result we come out with, we need to add classes or we need to add materials, and that has a cost as well. Whether it's, you know, getting the materials or adding another class, or, you know, that's not free. So, you know, I was curious how you all responded to reading that material. It was a while ago that we got those links, but does anybody else have anything to say?
I do. Having taught history for 40 years, there wasn't much in my book. And I thought it was important to teach as much Indian culture as I knew or could find. And I'm not an Indian, and I'm not a Native American, and you can just do the best you can, but let's face it, textbook history is written by the winners. And the Indians got a bad deal. That's why I have, since 1999, thought we need to add an elective class. And if it costs money to add one, well, we'll save money by subtracting something else. And gosh knows, we've got plenty of something elsees. Hang on. Just a thought. I can also tell you -- wait, hang on. I can also tell you just the way textbooks are written. The last American history textbook I used when it came to World War II, the only thing it said about General Eisenhower was that he failed to integrate the troops. They forgot to mention that he won the war. But the page and a half on Tokyo Rose was pretty detailed. So, and you know, I'm not blaming anybody for the textbooks. There's only so many you can buy, and most of them are written for California and New York, and we're kind of stuck with it. But, I mean, that's just the way it is. That's business. That's the textbook business. But I think if we have somebody who is willing to go to the Native American sources and teach Native American culture the right way, it's not only good because we have a nickname, it's just plain good. That is original American history. History didn't start with Christopher Columbus. I was advised by someone who does not like our logo to read this book, Neither Wolf Nor Dog, to try to get an insight into the Indian mind. For me, you know, I mean, it's like Cliff's Notes, but it's a heck of a book. Everyone should read it. But there's a lot of good points in there that we could adopt in our classrooms. Even if we did change the nickname, we need to learn this stuff. Look where we live. We need to learn this. So I know Elizabeth is great on being financially sound, and we need her to do that. But I just want to point out that not all textbooks are written with you folks in mind. That's just the way it is.
Yeah, I actually don't dispute that at all, because you can only fit so much in there. And that reminded me of something else from my conversation with Natasha. She wanted me to make sure that I made the point that a lot of the teachers supplement with other materials, and that they just couldn't photocopy all of that. So she -- I don't know what that is, but she said whether it's books like this, or whether it's articles or things like that, that those things are out there too. So I would say that the parents of these students probably know better than I would at this point.
Thank you. Anything else on that? Julie, some people had asked -- you had reported at the April 16th meeting on the discussions that you and Randy had with a couple of the high schools that had gone through the change process and that changed from Redskins to something else. And some people asked if you would reach out to those that had not changed. Were you able to do that?
I was. So I will report to you on two schools that --
Microphone. Hold it closer.
Can you hear me now? Thank you. All right. So I did, and I reached out to some schools, and I'd like to report on two schools. And as with the gentleman I talked to that had changed their logo, these gentlemen were equally gracious and giving of their time and information. So the questions that I asked them were, or that I -- information that I got from them, and this was after I actually looked on their websites, I looked at their Wikipedia pages, which you can take Wikipedia with a grain of salt, I think. I confirmed some of the things on Wikipedia. I read articles that were maybe referenced news articles about them, and then I called them, so I had a basis upon which to ask them questions. And the questions I asked were, or the information I found out were demographics of their schools. Have you been approached? How were you approached to change the name, if you were approached? The history of your mascot or logo? Serious consideration to change it? Why or why not? If yes, the process you used, and if yes, how did you come to the conclusion to keep what you did? So the first school is Neshaminy High School, and that is in Bucks County, Pennsylvania, which is northeast of Philadelphia.
What was the name of the school again? I'm sorry.
Neshaminy. It's N-E-S-H-A-M -- I'm sorry, A-M-I-N-Y. Their graduation rate, just so you can have some context, is 97%. They have 3,000 students in grades nine through 12, about 750 a class. They're the only high school in the district. They have 10 schools in the district, 8,700 students altogether, six elementaries K through four, three middle schools, five through eight, and one high school, nine through 12. Neshaminy is an Indian, a Native American name from the -- and I apologize for not getting the correct pronunciation of this. I do apologize. It's the L-E-N-A-P-E Indians who lived along the Neshaminy Creek, running through the district. That's where their name comes from. Their principal is Dr. Robert McGee. Dr. McGee became the principal -- he's been the principal, I think, since 2008. He was the Assistant Principal before of Academic Affairs, Scheduling, and Student Records. He was the prior district curriculum and instructional department, middle-level instructional math coach, and assessment data overseer. It's kind of a big name. He spent 17 years in Sandberg Middle School as a math teacher and a department chair, and he's a native of Levittown, which is in the area. So they still have their logo. And forgive me if I use the term mascot and logo interchangeably. I've been working really hard not to do that, but once in a while, I slip. There was a name controversy which began in 2012. There was a parent of a Native American descent began a campaign to change the name because that person believed it was racially offensive and harmful. There were a number of board meetings about it. The Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, which I liken to our Ohio Civil Rights Commission, received a complaint in 2013 from that parent. After investigating, they ruled against the school, and the school was told to change its name while the school appealed. On October 23rd, 2013, the student editorial board of the -- the student newspaper declared its intent to no longer use Redskins in publications. The school administration said they didn't believe that the school newspaper had the power to do that. In April of 2014, there were a couple students who received Scholastic Keystone Press Awards for their articles. This became a big deal. That's why I'm giving you all the history. And then one student later received a Golden Circle Award from Columbia Scholastic Press Association that same year. And in July of 2014, the Pennsylvania High School Press Association awarded an honor to the teacher, the advisor of the group, for assisting the students. And I just want to read to you what that all caused in that district. It's a paragraph, so please bear with me. "Toward the middle of May, students submitted an opinion editorial containing the name Redskin. Principal McGee told the students that they would be required to run the piece in the paper, or the final issue would not be allowed to be distributed. The Play Wikian, which is the name of the student newspaper, decided to run their last issue of the year without the piece a few days later. McGee and the school reacted by restricting access to the issue through confiscating the publication, calling for an emergency meeting with co-editor Gillian McGoldrick, and restricting access to accounts on social media and the website for the Play Wikian." Mr. McGee would later defend his actions in a statement on the website for the school. "On June 26th of that year, the school board allowed the Play Wikian to ban the term Redskin in articles, but required that editorials and letters to the editor had to be published with the term present and uncensored." So, the long and the short of it is, they still have their logo, and -- And the last thing I have to tell you is, the comment, the last comment that I think is of importance for our meeting is, this has only happened when someone -- it has only been discussed when someone brings it up, and we don't think we're going to see any change anytime soon.
Mr. -- Dr. McGee said that?
No, Dr. McGee did not say that. That was someone else that I had talked to on the phone. Because Dr. McGee was unavailable at that time. So here's the second school I talked to, and this was at the suggestion of Mr. Wolfe, really turned out to be kind of a cool thing, because it's Paw Paw High School in Michigan. And Paw Paw High School, the demographics of Paw Paw are that -- sorry, I want to get my pile straight here. The principal there is a gentleman named Michael Dallinger. It's a rural district, one high school, 2,300 students in the whole district. It's in the southwest corner of Michigan's lower peninsula. It's kind of, if you look on a map, I'd say 20, 25 miles from Kalamazoo and 20, 25 miles from Lake Michigan. Their building's configuration is early -- one early elementary, K through two, I'm sorry, and then a later elementary, sorry, I can't read my writing, three through five, a middle school, six through eight, and a high school, nine through 12. They have 685 kids total in the high school, and their address is interestingly on Red Arrow Highway. They have a 15% minority population, and like the other Michigan school I talked to, the sort of the source of their minority population is primarily workers that have come to work in their grape vineyards, and I think he said blueberries too. So that's their demographics. So the really fun thing about this conversation was that Mr. Dallinger, when I talked to him, he's 49 years old, he's pretty young, actually, and he's retiring next week. And he's retiring because he has 25 years in education, and in Michigan, you can buy five years of service, prior service, if you're in the military. So he actually is going to have 30 years, and he'll have a full retirement, and he's going into the private sector to do educational kinds of things. So he's not getting out of education altogether, he's just working for someone else. But he said, the first thing he said to me is, you came to the right place, because I came from a high school named Marshall High School that had the same logo mascot, Redskin. They decided to change it, and I came to Paw Paw, same issue, and we decided to keep it. So he shared information a little bit on both, so I'm going to just share a little bit from his experience, because I think I owe it to him, because he spent so much time with me, and I think I owe it to you all. This report is not all that long. So he was at Marshall for seven years. It's outside Battle Creek. He was at Paw Paw for 12 years. And here's the really fun thing about this, too. As fate would have it, he was at Anderson High School's grad -- As fate would have it, he was at Anderson High School's graduation last week because his nephew graduated from Anderson High School. So I felt like, I don't know, there was some divine intervention thing that, I reached out to Andy because I couldn't get the Oklahoma school that I wanted because they were out of school. And Andy said, "How about Paw Paw? I heard about Paw Paw." And there you go. So, full circle. He said, "We had a great graduation," by the way, and he said, it was interesting to him to note that the, you all can tell me if you're graduating seniors, the senior motto was, I think in our program, "Once a Redskins, always Redskins." So... I only say that, and I don't mean any disrespect to your position. I only say that primarily because it stood out to him, because he's seen every side of it. So as I told you, he's retiring next week, and he's going into the private sector. And so Marshall is the high school that he came from. And he described Marshall as a more liberal and highly educated population. I'm sorry, pardon me. He said it was a disaster how they did it. There were two years of debating. I think he felt pretty free to talk to me because he's leaving the educational system, so I'm quoting him. He said it was pretty much a disaster how their board did it. They had seven to 12 board meetings. They moved it to the auditorium of the school. They let everyone and their brothers speak for three minutes each before the board even got to their own business at those meetings. Then, after all that, Marshall decided to have a committee, and they had one year without a mascot or logo or anything. They were just nobody. And their board voted four to three to change it. Interestingly, Paw Paw had a very different experience. This former superintendent, again, this is according to the principal, downplayed the issue. Instead of just, that superintendent thought there was an issue. And instead of directly addressing it, the Indian head started to disappear, the costume disappeared, they stopped printing Redskins on all the uniforms. And then three years ago, there was a new athletic board, probably like our boosters. They decided, if we're the Redskins, we're going to go full out. And they did. So they did things like, they got one of those big blow-up things that football players run through. It's a big Redskins head. They did new scoreboards in the stadium with Redskins on it. And then they heard from someone outside the county that said, you know, "This is offensive." Oh, I also wanted to tell you, the Paw Paw community, and again, this is according to the principal, is not as well-educated as Marshall, but very nice, down-to-earth, hard-working community. After the person from outside the county came to a board meeting and said, you know, "We think this is..." It was a person, some other supporters, obviously, but after they came, there were three to four months of discussion. The board said, "We'll make a decision." The governor, in the meantime, as the board was hearing arguments on both sides, asked the state attorney general for an opinion on whether the state would withhold federal funds if they, if there were offensive mascots for having derogatory logos. Again, this was at the same time the board was discussing it. And there was an opinion by their state attorney general that said, "You can't withhold funding." According to the principal, he said, "The kids really don't care." And what their board ended up doing was voting four to three to keep it. And here's the most interesting thing about their board's decision. This happened in February of 2017. The Board of Education approved the measure on a four to three vote to keep the mascot, that's their words, not my words, and permanently prevent the mascot from being changed, permanently, unless funding is threatened to be pulled, either from the state or the federal government. So they put a caveat on it. So that's pretty much my report. Again, I am grateful to all four gentlemen for talking to me and Randy, and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thanks, Andy.
You're welcome. Great work.
Thanks.
Thank you. You really do a nice job with everything you do, Julie. Patty Sneed and I did a little bit of further investigation on costs associated with any change. In particular, we focused on the uniforms. It's complicated, fair Patty? There is a detailed schedule of the uniforms and the replacement cycle. It's by sport. That detail reflects whether a uniform has a logo on it, whether it has a nickname on it, whether it has both or even neither. And there are some that have nothing on them. There's costs associated with it, and again, indicates the replacement cycle. That schedule reflects a cost of $189, 776.73. But it's much more complicated than that because the varsity uniforms go down to JV. JV goes down to freshmen. So by the time the freshmen are done with the uniforms, some may have been in service for as much as 12 years. Based on the work that Patty and I did, I think at the end of the day, Patty's initial estimate of $300,000, based on what West Claremont did, is reasonable for our purposes. But again, it's much more complicated than that. Do you want to add anything to that, Patty?
I think the big, the difference in the pricing was the replacement. Because if we go on the cycles of every four years, then if we bought all new ones now, we can't buy all new ones in four more years and keep going four. So there would be uniforms that may only go three years, but some would have to go five. And then by the time it got down to freshmen, you're at 13, 14 years for those uniforms.
I mean, it would require, if we do it, it's going to require a full new replacement cycle. I don't know what it looks like. And I don't know, you know, you'd stretch some and you'd shorten others, and we're not there yet. It's complicated. But I think going with what we saw from West Claremont, again, for our purposes, I think is reasonable.
Do these costs, I'm sorry, did I interrupt somebody? Do these costs reflect just the uniforms or other things too? The $300,000?
The $300,000 is more than what we've got, but it's because it is broader. And so, for instance, in the schedule we've got, cheerleading has no nickname on anything, but they've got the logo on the competition uniforms only. Boys and girls, Boys Cross Country apparently doesn't have it, but they've got a tent that's got some you would know, Andy. And so, you know, there's a cost associated with changing that. So we've got information that goes beyond uniforms where you have either logo or nickname and costs associated with that. But again, it depends on where you are in the replacement cycle. For our purposes, you know, I've got a number here of 189, but it's not...
Keep going.
But it's not realistic because the replacement schedule is different.
Julie, that does not include the tent either, like the big blow-up tent we have, the big walkout. That does not include that. That's included somewhere else.
Say that again. I couldn't hear you. What was that?
So that $300,000 is for the uniforms.
Yes.
But that other cost of like the tent, the breakaway tent and the blow-up tent, that was included elsewhere in the other $450,000.
What about some of the non-athletic?
Hey, listen up. I don't want to have to ask anyone to be removed. We're just trying to be able to hear each other. We need to be able to have our meeting. We can't hear each other when you're talking. I'm sorry, Patty, what did you say?
I was asking a question to Patty. The 300, was that things like uniform? That's not hard costs that are other things within the building? I mean, for example, the sign out front, some of the other tangible...
Correct. Correct. That is strictly uniforms. That is tops, bottoms, golf bags, I think were included in that, but that includes nothing else for athletics.
So I don't mean to put you on the spot if you're not prepared with this answer, but, and I know we talked about this at the second meeting, but what are those other costs outside of this?
Outside of athletics and uniforms.
Right.
And I think, yeah.
Is that the big orange book?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Which includes the 300, which, when Patty came to us with the 454, I think for our purposes, that's the number we can look to. Fair Patty?
So...
(inaudible). (inaudible).
So is the question, as I understand it right now, Jim, are you asking, does the 454 include everything?
The 454, Patty did a really good job going out, talking to people, taking pictures of everything. That's what the binder is.
Why leave out the gym floor?
The total is 454, includes the $300,000 for the uniforms. And there's other things within the 454. We wanted to do a deeper dive on the uniforms because we knew there was a replacement cycle. And we wanted to understand what that replacement cycle looked like to get a better understanding of what the real cost was. And as I said, it's complicated because the varsity goes down to JV, and JV goes down to freshmen. Out at West Claremont, they replaced all uniforms all at once at a cost of roughly $300,000.
Correct. Because it was a new school, you combine two schools, and you can't use an Amelia or a Glenn Essie, so you had to get all new uniforms for the new school, for all levels of sports. And I'm not, I'm not sure what West Claremont's replacement cycle is, but I know at this, at the older schools, that it was similar where varsity goes to JV and on down.
Does this also include the gear that you'd have to give to coaches, managers, trainers? I just...
I don't know the answer to that. We had a fairly extensive meeting. We didn't ask about the coaches.
Little details, but it all adds up. So, I understand then, the 454, whatever that number was, that's if we went all in, all at once. No uniform transition cycle?
That's right.
Okay. But the 454 does not include the gym floor. True?
The gym floor is not included. The gym floor is not able to be sanded one more time. The gym...
Yeah. That's true.
The gym floor is scheduled for replacement in two years. The 454, if I recall correctly, Patty, did include, I think it was 30,000 for changing one end of the end zone. Is that right? There was a number for it.
That included fixing the end zone, getting rid of the Redskins in the end zone, and putting Anderson on that side, too. So both of the end zones would say Anderson on it. And then that 454 included all the scoreboard boards and anything else that had Redskins in the building.
You all have the information.
And that, so when we talk about the basketball court, for the next two years, that included money to replace the logo in the middle, but not redo the whole floor. So there's still a cost involved in the floor.
If I recall, you had a decal going over it, maybe a cost of about 15, but it's in your report.
Correct.
Other questions about that information? All right, anyone else have any updates or reports to make? All right, so let's talk. What I'd like to see us do tonight is, and just for those in the audience, we don't talk offline. We can't. This is a meeting of, a board of, a committee of the Board of Education. And this is our working session. This is where we have discussions. This is where we try to reach consensus. We don't do it offline. Some of us have talked, but we don't get into the detail, and certainly not, a majority of this committee has never talked, except for at these meetings. So this is where we have our discussion, and we try to come to a recommendation. Who'd care to start us off?
I'll go first. First of all, I see the little signs once in a while, "Facts Matter." On the point Jim just made, he and I have spoken, I think, two times. And at no time has he ever asked me how I'm going to vote, or tried to persuade me to change, or most of the time, to make up my mind. He's been a very good guy. I know some of you like to bash him. That has not been my experience. If there's collusion going on, I guess I'm not allowed to be in on it. Because I don't see it.
And Mr. Wolf, I can confirm that. I mirror exactly what you said. I've had, I think, three phone conversations with Mr. Fruman, and all positive, no pushing of any way he's even gone out of his way to say, "I'm not here to, you know, get your opinion, or find out what your opinion is, or give you your opinion." This process, for me, has been nothing but professional.
Thank you. So I'll go first, and I guess this is the chance to say what we think. Is that right, Jim?
This is it.
Okay. My belly hurts, just waking up in the middle of the night thinking about this. This has been awful. And I don't know if I've said this before, but Anderson High School... It's my life. And maybe that's not good. It's been very good to me. And I deserve to give this as close to 100% or more as I can. So I'm going to try to. When this first came up in 1999, I kind of ended up being the local yokel as saving our skins, you know, the first time. And the original thought then was, "Let's ask real Indians." I didn't happen to know any. So we got the addresses of Indian tribes, their offices, their headquarters, from the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And I sent out a lot of letters. I used School Stationery and Xerox machine, but I bought the stamps, a lot of stamps. A lot of stamps. And I just said, "Are we wrong?" I mean, there's a 50/50 chance we're wrong. 50/50 chance on most things. We did not get over 400 responses. I think we sent out over 400 envelopes. I'm not, I don't remember exactly. But every single response we did get back was positive. I would have never guessed that. I would have never guessed that. But almost every response encouraged us to do it right. Do not mess with spirituality. Don't make us a cartoon figure. And that seemed perfectly reasonable to me. Almost every letter ended with, "Go Redskins." And I got a whole lot of free coupons to casinos. It's good for business. I mean, it's like any other American, entrepreneurs. That's the way it should be. So the response was very positive. And we took the advice of several people on reservations or Indian organizations that I had more contact with, and we changed a lot of things on our logo. So when this came up again now, I thought, "That's still the thing to do." And I've spent a lot of time, and my wife will attest to this, trying to contact Indians, Native Americans all over the country. Talked to them. I was, one gentleman who was not in favor of the Redskins suggested I read this book, as I mentioned. I did. It's a wonderful book. Highly recommend it to everyone. To try to understand the mind. And this is what I've learned. I hope I got it right. It seems that the American Indian culture is very inclusive. Almost from day one, stray people, orphans, survivors of battles were welcomed into the tribe. Very inclusive. What a great concept. If somebody had more food than they needed and somebody else didn't, they shared. Not socialism, generosity. Not socialism, generosity. What a concept. And I also got the intention, and I asked questions about this, that intention mattered. I hope that's true, because our intention is good with the Redskins. It just is. So I made a list. I just made a list. I'm a coach, so I kind of analyze and evaluate and scout things out. Why should we change? Some white people feel it's offensive. It's true. Some people do feel that. Some Indians feel that it's offensive. Certainly true. Other schools have changed, for a variety of reasons. Point's been made, that changing during construction might be less expensive. It's probably true. Other people have said it's bad for our children and bad for our community. So I said, "Let's see some evidence." Please, anybody, give me one incident where our systemic institutionalized racism has caused our students to act in that fashion. I'm still waiting for an example. Just one of an example. It's bad for our community. It's bad for our reputation. Well, our students are getting into the finest schools in America? I've asked two trustees, two trustees, and the chairman of our Chamber of Commerce, in your recollection, and every living ex-principal of Anderson High School, have we ever lost a business from our neighborhood because of our logo? Have we ever had a family move out? Have we ever had a scholarship donor withdraw their money? And the answer, across the board, was, "Well, not yet, anyway." So I'm looking for an example. You know, I didn't know what I'd find. I did not know what I'd find. But that's what I found. But I keep looking. Now, I gotta tell ya, on the reasons to keep the logo, it seems as though, from every poll out there, and from speaking to some Native Americans, that the majority of Indians do not find it offensive. Certainly some do. And I gotta tell ya, I attended a wonderful event on Sunday, sponsored by Anderson Promotes Peace, about the Native American culture. Saw many people here. Wonderful event. I'm so glad I went. And I, I was there three and a half hours. And I spoke to several, and there weren't many Indians there, actually. But I spoke to a couple fellows who were wonderful. And I was so surprised to hear, and I'll paraphrase this, "I know I represent a minority of Indians." I was surprised to hear that. But I hope you change. But if you don't change, it's not the highest thing on our priority list. The honesty was surprisingly welcome. Wonderful guys. One fellow, in fact, I told him, "I have name envy." "My name's Wolf. I'm the track coach. I'm turning gray." And his Indian name was Gray Running Wolf. And he's a wonderful man. We did not have a very in-depth conversation about the other things, but, but we did. He's a wonderful guy. So I was, so the majority seems to not be offended. It would be nice to make everybody feel happy, but I don't know that that can happen. Like I said, there's no evidence that our nickname has promoted racism. Anderson Township remains a very desirable place to live. Changing is expensive, and I gotta tell ya, as our athletic director will tell ya, I do not spend other people's money lightly. I'm a real tightwad. And I buy our uniforms from Cool's Hot Sports Spot, because I think it's important to support Anderson Township. Get your spirit where they're. I have found unfounded charges of racism and bigotry, and I don't think they can go unanswered. For those of you who are upset, for those charges made by just a few folks, I think you have every right to be upset. And if we change this because of politically correct bullying, and that's what it is, people... Hold on. Hold on. This is the same thing I tell my students. I hope this is a teachable moment. This certainly does not apply to everyone. But we've all seen some nastiness on both sides. But if, if people, and I've had emails like this, if they say, "No, if you decide to keep it, we're going to continue to protest, we're gonna continue to complain, and we're gonna continue to disrupt education." Oh, oh yes. Oh yes. Those people, not everyone, those people are in it for themselves. They're not in it for any Indian or Native American, because what I read here, Indians and Native Americans are too good for that. They're in it for themselves, the people who just want to disrupt. And I think we need to stand up to bullies. And if we don't, and by, I'm not painting with a broad brush, because I know a whole lot of wonderful people sitting on this side of the room. If we don't stand up with them, and "Words Matter" is a really cute slogan, but we'll have to have a new one that says, "Bullying Works." We just will. And for those people who are involved in that, shame on you. Now, on the other hand, if the mascot, the old word, logo changes, to all you alumni out there, your memories are intact. You'll always be an Anderson Redskin. I'll always be an Anderson Redskin. But if, if it changes, get over it. Get over it. Because sometimes things do change. I don't know what's gonna happen, but I'm, I'm not gonna take bullying. The facts, to me, seem to indicate that the vast majority, 3,400 folks in our, of our neighbors, signed a petition to keep it. 3,400 verified names. I hear a lot of speakers at the last couple open microphones, reading letters from people who are out of town. A whole lot of people from out of town. Frankly, I don't really care about out of town. I just don't. Maybe I'm close-minded. I may lose a whole lot of friends tonight, but I, I like my neighbors better. I like my township best. Some people aren't gonna like me after this, but what I have found is that the majority of both groups are not offended. It will be expensive to change it. We're not in a position to spend money. I think, well, certainly capable, that the school board, I, I'm certainly sure that the school board is capable of multitasking and doing their regular job at the same time. They have bigger fish to fry. And I think some credibility to get back. And I think we have good people here to do that. I do. I think we have good people. But that's what I think. I think the numbers say, "Don't change." I think the price tag says, "Don't change." And I think the idea that I've learned from Native American thought is that intent matters. And I see a lot of good hearts in our neighborhood. And I think I'm probably breaking a few hearts with my comments, and, and I'm sorry for that, but I have to tell you what I think. That's why Jim asked me to be here. He knew he wasn't gonna get, you know, a sheep.
To be fair, we have received bullying from the other side as well, threatening not to vote for future levies. So, we cannot not mention that.
You're right. It's on my list, and I forgot.
It has happened all around. And I, I want everyone to recognize that we've been put in an impossible situation. It is lose-lose. There is absolutely no way to make everyone in this room happy. So, it's, it is what it is. And what's been great, honestly, sitting in my spot, for having this take so much time, has been the ability to have genuine, honest conversations with everyone. I mean, I can look around both sides and know that I've had honest conversations with everyone, and it's complicated. There is not a simple answer to this. I'll just keep on going and say where I am. I'm still in a place of, I'm unsure. And I'll tell you why. On one hand, I'm a Redskins. And I, I will always be a Redskins. I went to my 20-year reunion on Saturday night, talked about this issue almost the entire night. It follows me everywhere I go right now. And I'm deeply traditional. I'm a pretty conservative person who doesn't bend to public pressure very often. And honestly, our school's always been a source of pride and tradition for me. On the other hand, we are a public education institution. So, I know that this conversation is often compared to private sports teams and stuff like that, but we are charged with education. So, anytime a subject this divisive comes up, we have an obligation to look at it. I mean, we are charged with educating children about history, education, culture. That's our job. So, if it's this divisive, I mean, if it causes people to act this way, we have to take it seriously. And, and we have to take it seriously that it might keep on coming up. So, I, I hear everything you say. And I have heard both sides, I have heard people tell me, "It's offensive." I have heard people say, "It's not offensive." I believe both. I genuinely do. I am still at the place I was at the first night, which was, even if I do believe it needs to evolve over time, and I'm not saying yank it today, but if I believe over time we should evolve to a new place as a community, I'm concerned about the cost. I've, I've been on the Board of Education for five months now, and I've had enough time to see our numbers and know the situation that we're in. And I'm extremely concerned, especially if the number is close to $500,000. I don't see how we could do it anytime in the next two to three years. So, that's kind of where I am. And I have told this exact same story to everyone on both sides. I, I, and I, and that's why we're here, is to talk through this. Because the other thing is, is I'm the board representative on the Safety Committee, and we're having these discussions about school resource officers, and that's a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. That's a constant cost, that we are going to be looking for ways to fund. So, can I justify putting a vote in to spend money to change something if, if we're not gonna put it forth for something like that, when I have two kids at air? I don't know. I, I, I haven't figured that out yet. I'm just, I'm just being honest. So if you guys have thoughts that follow that, it would be helpful.
I'm a 1972 graduate of Anderson High School. I was a student athlete, and I was very, very proud to call myself an Anderson Redskins. By the way, I'm one of five people who are graduates of Anderson on this panel. Andy mentioned waking up in the middle of the night. I've been on the board 15 years. We've had some tough issues. I think the toughest was when we failed a operating levy and we had to riff, which is a fancy way of saying "fire," teachers. That, that one was a gut-wrenching one. This one is almost equal to that. I've been a fiscal conservative, and so I would have a very difficult time recommending something that has an immediate incremental cost. We simply, as, as Elizabeth just mentioned, we don't have large amounts of cash to spend on discretionary items. If, if we were to recommend and the board was to vote to make a change, I would want to see it done a similar way, and I can't remember the high school, Julie, but one of the high schools that took, it was like four or five years when they, they transitioned.
Oberlin.
Because that, that minimized costs. Thank you. One of the things that I'm concerned about is, at some point in the future, one of these three things may happen. And I've talked with, well, Ohio High School Athletic Association may make a ruling that schools don't have to play schools with offensive nicknames. I spoke with the executive director of Ohio High School Athletic Association, who, by the way, is retiring. He's been, he's a very conservative guy. New leadership is coming in. That's, I, I'm not suggesting it, I'm just saying that is a possibility. Another thing is, is the possibility that legislature will pass a law requiring, again, offensive nicknames to be changed. A third possibility is, there could be litigation. It'll be costly to taxpayers. And that would cause us to make a change to avoid excessive expenses. That, again, those are things that, we have to think long-term, what's in the best interest of the district. And actually, Andy started, had mentioned that a minute ago. We have to think, long-term, what's right for the district, for students, for our community, and also for taxpayers. Taxpayers get left out of that a lot. Here's something else that, that I wanted to throw out on the table. It seems like it's either all or nothing. Is there possibility for some type of compromise? Let me give you an example. Is it possible to change from the Redskins to the Indians? Now, hear me out. Merrimont is the Warriors. They're north of us. That's taken. Indian Hill, Indian Hill, is the Braves. They're to the northeast of us. The nearest Indians, I think, is Fairfield. It's the sixth most popular, it's the sixth most popular nickname in, in Ohio. They're 24. It would require no change in color, no change in the logo. And we, by the way, just to be clear, we eliminated the mascot in 2003. So, we don't have a mascot, just to be clear. Anyway, that was just something in the way of thinking about a way to, it seems like, like I said, there's been no discussion of any kind of compromise, other than all or all or nothing. So, a, a comment's been made a couple times about people threatening on operating levies. I've gotten a number of emails, "Do it my way, or I won't vote for the next operating levy." The state legislature has set up a funding system in the state of Ohio that requires voter approval for incremental funding. There's no inflationary component. Some of you may have heard of House Bill 920. It was passed in the 70s. It keeps us from getting any increase in inflationary spending on real property. So we have to go to the voters. That's the way the legislature's set the system up. That's the way it is in Ohio. We have to go to the voters to get any kind of incremental funding. And to say, "I'm not gonna vote for a operating levy," what happens is, we don't get the incremental money, expenses go up, discretionary spending gets evaluated. Athletics is one of the first things that's looked at in discretionary spending. It's not just here, it's any school in the state of Ohio. That's, that's the way it works. And then, of course, you wind up letting teachers go, which does nothing but hurt students. And, you know, I think if you really cared about athletics and students, you would never make a statement like that. But that's what we've heard. Boards can't use, oh, by the way, another comment we heard, "We're sitting on some bond money, so use that for operating expenses." That's illegal. You can't do that. Once a bond is, issue is passed, that money is, has to go for its intended purpose. I had some of the same thoughts as Andy. I'm not gonna repeat 'em, just as far as the pros and cons of going through that. That was well done. And different words mean different things to different people. One of our superintendents, many years ago, was John Patswald. Well, when I think of John Patswald, I think of somebody who was a great guy. Now, some people think of a bathroom. I don't think of a bathroom when I think of John, but that's just an example of different things. Words can mean different things to different people. That's a little silly, but it makes the point. Nobody actually thinks of that when they think of, of that word. So, my point is, what Red- So, my point is, what redskin means to some people is something different to other people. So, you can live with it. Rather than repeat other things, I'll just close by saying, I wanted to see if there was any interest whatsoever in looking at some other options, either timing, or different ideas, or some other way to approach, other than all or nothing. Thank you.
I mean, I would ask that same question. I had written in my notes that the community would need to be in a place of collaboration and some place of unity for it to be a success. And as this has gone on, I'm just really concerned about that. And I don't know if that's an option of it.
We can make any recommendation that we want to make, and it'll be up to the Board to vote on that recommendation. And whatever we want to put on the table is on the table.
Patty?
So, when you first asked me to be on the committee, I was told, "We have to do what the best thing for the community would be." So, with all the emails and all the conversations that we've had, I still have a problem making a change. I just feel like the school, the school's been through enough, and I see no reason for it, unless it's mandated. It comes from Ohio High School saying, "You have to make the change," and then we have no choice but to spend the money to make that change. But for now, I think we ought to keep it.
So, my comments are going to mirror a lot of what's already been said. I'm the out-of-towner that Mr. Wolf talked about. I don't live in Anderson Township, but I am a 1987 graduate of Anderson High School. I was a redskin. I will always be a redskin. I'm proud to be a redskin. And like Mr. Wolf, I wake up in the middle of the night, and then I can't go back to sleep because I'm laying there or sitting there, and just things are running through my heads. And some of the notes that I've written down, when I say these, you're going to think that I'm leaning in a certain way, and I'm going to tell you that I'm not, because I'm, like Elizabeth, I'm still on the fence. One of the themes I've heard is that the majority should rule this. And honestly, I can't tell you which side is the majority. I mean, I can look in the room and see which side, I can look in the room and see which side is the majority here, but the number of emails we've gotten, there's a lot...
Be respectful. Let him speak.
There's a lot of passion on both sides of the issue. So, with the majority rules aspect, I don't think that this is an issue where the majority should necessarily rule. If majority always rules, we would have Al Gore and Hillary Clinton as president. If...
Look, you've got to let him speak.
Another aspect has been...
Guys, we really want to do this in a right way. We're working really hard. Please let him speak. Please let him speak.
Another aspect has been whether it's offensive or not. And I think the consensus is that it's offensive to some, but it's not offensive to most. The polling, the Washington Post poll, 91% that said that Native Americans did not find it offensive, and that some of them supported it. So, that means that 9% did find that it was offensive. I believe there's about 1,200 students in Anderson right now. 9% of that would be about 100 students, and I think that if an administrator or principal, if 108 students were to come to the principal with an issue, that they would sit down and listen to that issue and try and work through that with those people. So, I'm not trying, like I said, this is going to sound like I'm leaning a certain way, and I'm not. To me, I'm proud to be a redskin, but if the fact that me calling myself a redskin is hurting someone else, then that takes just a little bit away from my being proud of that. I don't think that the name redskin is what makes Anderson great. I think that it's the Andy Wolfs, it's the Mike Halls, it's the Dick Wesps, God rest his soul, it's the Wild Man Walkers, well, kind of my old man Walker, but it's the administrators, it's the faculty, it's the staff. It's what makes Anderson great. It's not necessarily that it's the Redskins that makes it great. I know that it's the Redskins that brings us all together, but it's not bringing us all together right now. It's, cost is a factor, the construction is a factor. Because I'm the outsider, because I'm the out-of-towner, I haven't, that's for the Board to take in and to decide. I'm here to weigh in on the Redskins. And it's up to them whether or not, you know, if Redskins is the issue that's more important than any other issue, and I don't know that it is. It's hard, because I don't want the Redskins to change. But, but, but if it doesn't change, we're going to be back here in another five years. We will. It depends, I'll tell you what, if we do change, we're probably going to be back here in another five years, because people are still going to be sore about changing. I understand. I understand. There's, you might be able to tell, I'm kind of a bigger guy. I like eating Chinese, and I get a fortune cookie every once in a while. And there was this one fortune cookie that just struck a nerve with me. And it wasn't that it had the lucky numbers on the back, because it did, but it said, "It doesn't get better until you get better." So, whatever problems, and this is a personal thing, so whatever problems I'm facing, I can't change, I can't make things change until I change. So, I don't know that, you know, that Anderson can change Redskins until everybody is in a place where we can be, I don't want to say civil, because I think we're being fairly civil, but, I mean, where we can understand where everyone is coming from. If we are to, if we're going to make a recommendation tonight, it's going to be up to the last minute on what, how I decide, I'm going to say, because I still value, you know, everyone else's opinion, and, you know, still taking in all the information. That's just where I stand right now.
Julie?
No. Do you want me to go next?
I'm just taking a breath. I hope you do want to hear me. I really do. Because I think all of us have value. Every single person in this room has a value, right? I mean, every single person and every single person's opinion. If I didn't think that, I just left the school board in December, and I would never have agreed to be on this committee. I'm telling you. I am so grateful for, actually, Jim asking me, I kind of have a different approach here, because it's caused me to think hard. It's caused me to hear a lot of people. It's caused me to make new friends. It's caused me to, I think, be a better human being, as Pollyanna-ish as it sounds. So, just, I think a lot of you on the Anderson side might know me or my family. Just to give you a little background about me, not me, but my family. My husband, Mark, graduated in 1975. His older brother and sister also graduated. Harry Bissinger was a big football player back in the day, so you may, you of that age may know him. My sons both went to Anderson. Luke was a three-sport athlete, was fortunate to be on the winning state champion team, yay, and the runner-up team, which was probably, looking back as a parent, I'm sort of reflective these days because of the age of our kids, they're 21 and 27. That was one of the best times in our family's life. Nate graduated six years after Luke, and although he was athletic, he was sort of more the theater, music kid, equally devoted to the school for different reasons. So, as we've been going through this, I agree with everything everybody's said here today, and I really, these people are amazing. And we have, we've had individual conversations, but as Jim said, we are prohibited from having conversations in a group, so we have not. But I've learned a lot from them. I agree with everything that everyone has said. I agree with all the pros and the cons. I think we can all, even if we don't agree with it, we can see them. So, here's what I would like to do with my time. And please don't boo me. Please let my fellow committee members talk to me. I'm a lawyer by profession, and I ask questions all day long, and I spend probably, even though I'm kind of babbling right now, I probably spend 95% of my day listening. I learn a lot from listening to others, and there are three things that have caused me pause as we've gone through this. And I'd like to hear from my fellow committee members, if I can, on these three issues. I think I'll put them all out there, and whoever wants to respond can. The first issue is, please don't boo me. We don't have a mascot anymore. That went away. That concerns me, that we don't have a mascot. I mean, I think we should have a mascot. So, I'm not saying it should be the pictures, and I remember a long time ago seeing the mascot, but it's sort of foggy to me. I remember somebody dressed up, sometimes somebody didn't have a shirt on, sometimes people had headdresses on. But I'm not saying we should have a Redskins mascot. I think schools should have mascots, and we don't have one, and I think that's really sad. So, doesn't that bother you, that we can't have that anymore? Okay. All right. It bothers me. And you know what, Andy, you know, that's my first issue. It just bothers me, and I want to hear why it shouldn't bother me. I guess that's my first question. My second question is, and this kind of goes with what David was saying, here's my question. What effect does the percentage of people who do not support the redskin logo have on our decision? We've heard the Washington Post poll, where it's like 90/10. I've heard another poll from the people that support keeping the mascot, and I think it was from NAGA, 65/35. And even this district's last committee voted 62% to 38% to keep it. So, that's 38% of the people that said no. So, it's 60/40 approximately. And I guess, I think a logo is a symbol of our school and a symbol of our community, and it should be something we all are able to rally around. This is a second concern of mine. If we don't have that ability, what percentage is troubling to us? Is it 10%? Is it 20%? Is it 30%? Is it 40%? Or, as David was saying, does it have to be the majority? Do we have to, does that have to bother us enough to change it, that it has to be the majority that wants to change it? I don't know the answer to that. I need you to help me, Board, Committee. My third, my third point is, my third question is for you all to help me with, as I'm struggling, is, I think it was the first committee meeting, I don't know who brought it up, it might have been me, it might have been someone else. If we built a new high school now, would we even consider Redskins as a mascot? And the answer was no. Every single person said no. And the meeting went on, and the meeting went on, and Jim said, "Okay, it's time to wrap up." And I'm like, "Wait a minute, I have another question. I'm sorry, Jim, but I'm struggling with this. I'm struggling with the reason why." And I said, "Tradition is so important." I mean, I love my high school. It was very similar to Anderson High School. I loved it. Tradition is so important. High school memories are important. High school spirit, it's all so important. But tell me it's more than that. Tell me it's something besides tradition. Tell me another reason why we wouldn't consider it. Why, and at the end, everyone said, "Nope, it's tradition. That's why, that's why we're keeping it for us, but we wouldn't have it for a new school." So, that's my third question. Why wouldn't we build, if we built a new high school, why wouldn't we consider the Redskins as our mascot? If it's good enough for us to keep now, why wouldn't it be good enough for a new school? Help me out here. Do you understand my question?
I do.
Okay. Because it's proven itself divisive. I mean, that's why that's the answer. And that's what I've been wrestling with, is to hear, to hear that it is offensive to some and it's not offensive to other, which number matters? That's why I keep bringing it back to the fact that this is a public education institution. We do have to think about 20%. We truly, truly do. So, that's why I wrestle. And I think if it was a brand-new high school, Redskins wouldn't be on the table. And I don't love that either, and I still don't really know what to do with that. But, that's at least my answer. Do you have an answer to that?
Well, I don't know if I have an answer, but I do think that I have faith in some of the very large polls that were taken by groups that wanted to destroy the Washington Redskins, and those polls showed exactly the opposite of what they hoped to show. And I don't know that I can sit here and tell 70 to 90% of the Native American population that they're wrong. What about, how about the Cardinals? Let's be the Cardinals. How many of you ladies believe in women's equality? No one? Wow, what a surprise. Just one woman believes in women's equality. Have you ever noticed that the Cardinal on the football helmet is always the male? They never show the female Cardinal? We can find offense anywhere. It's always the male Cardinal. I mean, that's, it's a far-fetched example, but you know it's true. When will somebody complain about that? They may. My point is, offense can be found anywhere. I think intent matters, like I said before, so that's my answer.
Randy?
Julie, for your three questions, the no mascot, I think it's a shame too. It's very unfortunate. We had one when I was in high school, or senior high. But it's the price we pay to keep the Redskins name right now. That's why we have no mascot. What effect does it have on people that don't support it? I would ask, okay, let's forget this issue for a second. Let's say some other issue. Do you make a change if one person's affected by it? 1%? 10%? Does it have to be 51%? At what point do you make a change? I mean, we're a democracy, actually, we're a republic, but anyway. I mean, at what point do we act? And I guess it would depend on what the issue is. But, anyway. The third thing is, if we build a new high school...
The third thing is, if we build a new high school, the answer to that one is very simple. It's decades of tradition. I mean, I think that's the answer for your third question.
What do you mean, decades of tradition?
If we were building a new high school, Turpin, they came up with a different mascot. Of course, they didn't use an Indian-based nickname or mascot. But the reason we have Redskins and we've kept with it is decades of tradition. It's, it is what it is.
But why wouldn't we have it in our new school as well?
Because it's controversial. She's asked, why wouldn't we have it in our new school? And I said, my opinion, because it's controversial. We know it is.
Which brings us back in full circle to where we began. Jim?
Do others want to comment before I talk?
So, about, now, if this was just, excuse me, if this was just a general high school, any new high school, would they consider Redskins? And I would agree, no. If, as Mr. Smith brought up, with the Beach Acre Plan, that was a potential, and it was just going to be in Anderson High School, would the Redskins had transferred? I don't know. Probably. If it were a high school that combined Anderson and Turpin, no, it wouldn't be Redskins. But it wouldn't be Spartan either. It would be just like with West Claremont, you don't have a Trojan or the Barons, you have something, something completely new. When I was, when I was at Anderson, we had a mascot. And I agree with Mr. Smith, that's the price of keeping the Redskins name, is you don't have a mascot. And I think, that kind of does bother me, but, you know, I don't know that it bothers the students. And I don't know if it would have bothered me when I was there, if there wasn't, you know, someone dressed up as an Indian dancing around or riding on a horse or doing, I don't know that that would have bothered me at all. So...
Does it at all, keep with me here, does it at all seem inconsistent? I mean, no mascot, but we have the logo. I mean, does it seem inconsistent to you?
To me...
Help me out.
To me, no.
Okay. Or, tell me why.
I mean, because, like I said, I don't think that seeing someone dressed up, dancing around, acting a fool, is going to make me more spirited, you know?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying the mascot as it existed, I'm not saying the mascot as it existed before, I mean, any mascot to represent the Redskins. Does that make sense? I mean, is there anything that's respectful enough?
Yes.
That would, that...
I'll give you an example. Xavier University has the blue blob.
Right. Can we have an orange blob?
If you've ever been to a Xavier basketball game, they're extremely entertaining, whether they're playing or whether there's a timeout. They put on a heck of a show. With the creativity of our student body, if we couldn't come up with a cool mascot faster than you can imagine, I would be very surprised. These kids can think of anything. And that would be a fun thing to do.
But Xavier also has a Musketeer. I mean, I just, it just seems inconsistent to me. I just, I wish we could have something that is consistent with the tradition and the honor and the Redskins logo that we could have.
And that there's some, that there's some tangible symbol that could stand right here and represent an Anderson Redskins. And it bothers me that we can't have it, but I don't think it's necessary.
But I don't either, but I'm going, I'm going beyond the obvious. But it seems that there's some, there's some acquiescence by somebody, whether it's, whoever it is, whether it's the people that were on the committee in 2003, that maybe it's not a good thing to have. I mean, that's what bothers me. Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
I'm getting a little wonkish, but it...
No, I understand.
It taints the whole, this is tradition, this is honor, we're proud, and then they, we, whoever, take away some of that, and we're left with less. That bothers me. It just bothers me. We're left with something less.
Well, and I think, back in 2003, when they made the change to the logo, took away the tomahawk and the peace pipe, it's more of a, you know, if we are going to honor the Native Americans, then do it respectfully. And, and I've heard, I've heard that, you know, the Anderson, the Anderson logo is way more respectful than a lot of other things out there, especially Chief Wahoo, which is going away, and as well it should. I mean, it's not cartoonish, it's not a caricature, and, you know...
But why is, why is Chief Wahoo going away? Is it just because it's a caricature?
It's a caricature, and it's, so it, it's more that it's poking fun at American Indians than it is honoring them or respecting them.
It's kind of cartoonish and silly, so...
Right. All right, so when...
The reason in 2003 that we, the mascot was eliminated was, and I wasn't on that committee, I sat in the audience, but I wasn't on the committee, it was, they felt that a Caucasian student trying to imitate an American Indian could not do that respectfully, and therefore it was eliminated, and therefore there was no more potential for disrespect. And that's where we are today.
So, this, this issue has been a recurring one. You know, almost 20 years ago, 1999, people were sitting having this very same debate. In 2003, they came back and had this very same debate. In fact, if you look at the history, I wasn't here then, but boy, I sure have looked at the newspaper articles back then. It went on from 1999 until 2003, and in 2003, as some sort of compromise, the mascot's gone. That was an acknowledgement of something, right? In 2004, our school district did a diversity audit report, and at that time, they said, we need to take a look at the diversity, including the mascot issue. In 2014, I started on the board on January 1st in 2012, and I started seeing this stuff for the first time. In 2014, the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office terminated the Washington Redskins trademark protection. And yes, I know, they've got it back again, but there was a reason they lost it in the first place. In March of 2015, Lancaster, New York, voted to discontinue your use of the Redskins name, and I heard about it here in Forest Hills. They asked me to be on a national radio show to talk about why Forest Hills still had the Redskins. In April of 2015, the very thing Mr. Smith mentioned that he was concerned about, there was efforts through, with the Ohio High School Athletics Association to institute a ban of what they referred to as offensive mascots. It didn't go forward, but there was a reason for that discussion. August of 2015, Goshen, Indiana, discontinued its use, and again, I heard about it here in Forest Hills. And most recently, in January of 2018, the Cleveland Indians decided to get rid of Chief Wahoo on their uniforms, and that very next morning, I got a call from reporters. It's always an issue in Forest Hills. It continues to come up. We never have any control over when, and it always results in negative media coverage in Forest Hills. There's a reason for that! There has been a trend, it is a continuing trend, away from the use of the Redskins name. We didn't start that trend. It's, there's been a steady decline in the use of Redskins in high schools all across the country. In 2005, the NCAA instituted a rule which practically eliminated the use of Redskins or the use of Native American imagery in college athletics. It's happened there, it hasn't happened at the high school level. In October of 2015, California initiated a law that precludes it. Yeah, we're not California, but it's a pretty big state.
Folks, 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 folks. Thanks.
Mr. Smith and Ms. Bissinger talked to people in Lamar High School in Houston, Lancaster, New York, Goshen, Indiana. The change is inevitable. Now, now we can do it at its lowest cost while we're renovating the schools. I, for the life of me, do not understand why Forest Hills wants to be the last one standing on this issue. So, the question that Ms. Bissinger has been trying to get people to address here, the reason she keeps asking, why wouldn't we do it today? And the question is the obvious one. It's the reason this is a trend. The question is the term offensive. And we don't, we don't have to even answer that question. There's no question, there's no intent here, none at all. I absolutely agree with you, Andy. This isn't an issue that was anyone at Anderson High School asked for. There's nobody alive today that was here when it started. It is honor, it is history, it is tradition, it is pride. There's no question that there's anything but the utmost best intent. There's one. I don't, I don't doubt it.
All right. Folks, folks, folks. No, no. Folks, we're not, we're not doing this.
Hey.
We're not doing this. Calm down.
There's no intent for it to be offensive, but all we have to accept is that there is a significant population that does believe it to be offensive. I'll quote to you from the report of the Diversity Study Committee of March 17th, 2003. Findings, exactly, 15 years ago, the findings of the committee in 2003, there is general agreement that the word Redskins used alone is an offensive word. The committee found the surveys of 10 to 30% of Native Americans felt the word was offensive. Most dictionaries published after 1970 indicated the word is offensive. Dictionaries published prior to 1970 defined the word as a North American Indian. However, studying the word Redskins was not the purpose of this study committee. Rather, we were charged to analyze the question, does the Anderson community feel that the Anderson High School use of the term Redskins as a logo mascot is disrespectful and/or offensive to Native Americans? In other words, the committee was studying Anderson High School Redskins, placing the high school name in front of Redskins, it gives the words an entirely different meaning. To many people in the Anderson community, Anderson High School Redskins means respect, honor, great athletics, scholarship, great students, excellent school. I absolutely agree with that conclusion, but you can't take that conclusion without accepting its very beginning premise. That is, Redskins is offensive. And in 2003, that was the finding of the committee. In 15 years, it hasn't become less so. So, here's, here's really the issue, at least for me, and it has nothing to do with whether the term is or is not offensive. You've heard each and every one of the members of this committee sit here and tell you how horrible this entire process has been. It has been. It's been horribly divisive to this community. It has been. It's not the first time, and unless we do something about it, it won't be the last It would be very easy for me. I don't have kids in the district anymore. I don't...
Hey. Hey, guys. Come on, folks. Hold on. Let me remind you that the world's greatest principal, Mike Hall, is sitting right there. Do not make me send you to his office. Behave yourself. Seriously, behave yourself.
My only interest is in what's best for Forest Hills, and when I say Forest Hills, I mean the entire district. I mean all of Anderson Township, I mean the village of Newtown, I mean all nine schools, and I also mean those families who don't have kids in our district. That is Forest Hills. This is a bad look for Forest Hills. So I have a recommendation that I think I'd like to make, and the committee can discuss it. We've already recommended that if there's a change, there would be no change in the colors. I agree with that. That would be part of my recommendation. I'd recommend we change the name, nickname Redskins to something else. I think we ought to maintain the Indian Head logo, depending upon input from our students. This fall, when the students come back to school, a committee will be formed, either this committee or some other committee to be appointed, to supervise the student selection of a new nickname, and if they so desire, a new logo. Or they can choose to keep the Indian Head logo if they want, and they can select some other Native American NIP gang, subject to committee approval. Or they can select both a nickname and a new logo. It would be effective in the 2019, 2020 school year, when the renovations are scheduled to be completed. There would be fundraising to assist with the cost of the change, and I agree with, and I agree with Mr. Smith, that we should do a gradual implementation of the change to reduce the impact of the costs. We would replace the uniforms at the earlier of scheduled replacement, or if funds are made available. That's my recommendation. I'd be interested in the input from the committee.
Jim, I think, I think I got most of what you said, but what I didn't understand is, the second thing you said was change the Redskins nickname. Is that, and then you talked about the students and their involvement, but is change the Redskins nickname not negotiable? I mean, that's, that's part of your recommendation?
It's part of my recommendation.
But did you say something about the students possibly keeping it, or did you say keeping the Indian Head?
Keeping the Indian Head logo, only.
All right.
Is an option for them, if they came back and recommended to keep the Redskins name, would that be consistent with your recommendation?
No.
That's what I, that was a better way to ask it.
It has to change.
I have a what-if. What if we did some kind of a survey between a couple names and Redskins was one of them? Could that...
The recommendation is to change. Redskins would not be an option.
I'm just, I'm asking. I ask a lot of questions. Okay, questions, questions help. I'm just saying, well, the reason I ask that is because, is, you know, both sides have used the majority card, and I actually have experienced the majority being in the middle. When I ask random people at Kroger or Target, or even at my reunion, the number-one response I get is, oh, that's happening again? That's the number-one thing. And then the second is, well, yeah, it probably should change. I mean, I'm dead serious. So, the reason I suggested a survey is because that would give you data. I will be silent until you stop speaking. We have shown this community a tremendous amount of respect for the past few months. Please, show us respect. The reason I brought that up is because that would give you some data points. It would show you actually, you know, who's in favor of keeping it and who's not. So, that's the reason I asked that.
Elizabeth, let's go further with that. Let's think, think, think this through. So, I, I think it was Goshen High School, when they came to the point of choosing a new logo mascot, they had current students, they had alumni. I think they even asked the community, but with different, with different, different constraints on each, like the kids in the school, they all get to vote, but the alumni...
They even asked the elementaries, too. Didn't they go out?
And they asked the elementaries. That's a good point. Thanks, Randy. They asked the elementaries, but for alumni, I think you had like, I don't know, like, three days, and you had to like show up in person, which I think seemed kind of harsh, but you just couldn't get people emailing in. I, I'm wondering what, who you think would be able to participate in that kind of a vote? I mean, you don't have to answer right now, just...
Well, the reason I thought of it is because we did stuff like that before the bond issue. We, we did surveys like that, exactly like that.
Who did that?
The board. I wasn't on it, but you guys did surveys to decide how many buildings we would have and stuff like that. So, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah. It wa, it was Mr....
So, I, I...
Yes.
Since, since any change is going to essentially affect the students going forward, since I think, as part of the recommendation, it should include that the history remain, that the Hall of Fame doesn't change, that the, the statue remains, whether it's located where it is, or moved somewhere closer to Hall of Fame, or whatever, but that we maintain the history. But, so any logo, or any, any nickname or logo change should probably be focused with the students, because they're the ones who are going to identify with this new, with this new logo. Well, and...
Go ahead.
I truly believe that, that Redskins should be part of that survey, that they should have a choice whether to keep the Redskins now. But, it shouldn't just be just the high school students. It should include Nagle, it should include the elementaries, because this is going to affect them when they get there.
I hate to ask you this. Don't boo me. I'm asking, does this include all of Nagle, or only Anderson Nagle kids? I'm sorry. If, if you think we're one community, I need to ask the question. I'm just asking the question. Go ahead.
No, that's, that's, that's a good point. And, I mean...
Jim, can I ask a clarifying...
It would be everyone, one district.
Jim? I will tell you, if, if the intent is to leave Redskins on the list of available options, we ought not even make a recommendation. What's the point?
So, well, let me, let me go back to...
Clarifying question, Jim.
Oh, go ahead.
If, if in your recommendation, you were excluding Redskins, would you exclude anything else? For example, I gave the example of Indians.
No.
Okay. Okay, well, I have a thought here. I'm against the recommendation for this reason. We've all read a lot of stuff, but in almost every instance where a school or a university, especially universities, have changed their nickname, the story starts with this, "A group of liberal professors, blah, 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 blah." It's never the Indians. It's just never the Indians. And I, you know what? I, I just trust the Indians. I mean, why can't, if, they're just not going anywhere as a group. They didn't approach us. It's always a story that starts with a group of liberal professors. I mean, the Sioux Indians, the Sioux Indians went to court to save the fighting Sioux at North Dakota University, and the judge ruled they were not Sioux enough. If I was an Indian, how, how bad would you feel? Now, tell me I'm wrong. Tell me I'm wrong. The Sioux went, the Sioux went to court, and the ruling was, "You're not Sioux enough." So, all I hear is liberal professors started this. I'm, I'm just not seeing a movement from Indians. And I just think that, why can't they, I, I believe they would speak for themselves if there was a majority of them.
They did.
Andy, let's, let's go back to Elizabeth's idea that David talked about, that I asked questions about, and Andy said, "I don't think that's a good idea." We got a lot of emails, and I think even in the public commentary, the last meeting, a lot of people said, "You need to do a poll." So, I'm not sure why you're saying that's out for you. Except the liberal professor thing, I'm not, I'm not following that logic.
Well, the recommendation was to change it to something else. So, I'm, I'm against that.
All right. You're, you're against that. You're not against a poll, though, if Elizabeth, as Elizabeth suggested?
I mean, I don't, it wasn't my idea.
I said, I said, "That's what you're against, Andy, not the poll that Elizabeth suggested."
I'm, I'm all in favor of learning what my neighborhood thinks. I'm all in favor of learning what my neighborhood thinks. I, I think the 3,400 names on the petition tells us a lot.
It, it does. It does.
If we do a poll, if we do a poll, it's got to be done in a statistically significant way. It cannot be an opt-in poll.
Definitely not.
Yeah. Then you can't really include...
Well, it comes with a cost. Just so everyone knows, all of this comes with a cost. All of it costs.
Clarify for me, the purpose of the poll is to find out who thinks what?
I'm just, I'm just talking. I actually have only thought about this a tiny, tiny bit, but to be totally frank, and I will, it's gut-wrenching to be in this position, I do believe over time, I would like to see this community evolve to a different place. I honestly do. But, hear me out. Hear me out. What I'm wrestling with is that I'm not sure we're there right now, and I, I think it should be done in the right way, and I think we have to be able to afford it. So, that's why I'm, I'm like landing in this kind of a middle place, is if there's a diplomatic way to evolve or not evolve, I'm just one opinion, and everyone else is one opinion. Everyone trusts data, so...
I, I, I think it's the job of this committee...
Just asking.
...to either make a recommendation or not. And, you know, if, if the will of the committee is not, not to move forward with this, that so be it. But if, if that's not the case, I haven't heard. I know what, I know what Andy thinks, and I know what Patty thinks, and I'm not, I'm not sure where the rest of you stand. And, you know, if we're going to have a recommendation, I'd like to get there this evening. We're talking about a recommendation. I, I'm, I'm all ears on, on what your position is.
I'm still not sure where the half million is going to come up with to make the change.
That's what I was going to say. What's the plan for that?
I know you said about fundraising, but to fundraise a half million dollars, and how long would that take?
The, the cost of the change, you're broken down into two pieces as you've done it. It's the $154,000 for everything but uniforms, and then it's the 300 for the uniforms. What I would anticipate is the $154,000 is paid for, hopefully through outside fundraising, and that remains to be seen. And then, then the 300,000 for the uniforms, that's why I talked about the gradual implementation, as funds are available, or as the uniforms are replaced, which means some of these are going to be in cycle for a while.
But that means your varsity is going to be the Redskins, or whatever they decide, and JV and varsity would be the Redskins still?
That's why it's got to be gradual implementation. I mean, it's, yeah, that's what that means.
But what I, what I wrestle with is if we can raise $150,000, why don't we have another resource officer? I, I, I don't know how to...
Well, hold, you know the answer to that. It's because $150,000 is a one-time cost, and a resource officer is one that recurs year after year after year.
I do, but that's what I'm wrestling with, is there's...
Stop interrupting them, please. My gosh, I don't think we interrupted one person who ever came up here and spoke. And I guarantee you, I will talk to anybody in the parking lot, as will anybody. Please let them talk. It's common courtesy.
And you're not persuading anybody to change anything.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's...
It's not changing anything.
It's offensive.
I mean, yeah, so, I mean, we, we came into it saying that, you know, the reason we're considering it is because a part of our strategic plan is to care about the inclusion and the safety and security of every student. And this is on the philosophical, soft side of things, the logo is. But there's also a physical side of safety, and, and that conver, so, when this whole thing started, I didn't know anything about any of that. All of this has evolved over the last three months, and so that's why I'm asking the question, is, is it just not the right time? I...
Elizabeth, I'm not going to debate cost with you, because we all understand that there are different demands to run this district. It's a constant struggle, day in and day out. I get that, as does every mother person that's served on this board, either today or in the past. We make decisions. We make decisions for what's best for the district, and it's a, it's constantly a balancing act.
I know. I know.
And, and Elizabeth, I know you mentioned that you would hope that, you know, the community gets to a place, and that, you know, that there is ultimately a change. And it's, it's hard to envision getting to that place, and it just could be just because of the last, the, the last three months. It's, it's almost like, I think this brought up, brought this up in the beginning, that it's almost like a Band-Aid. If you're going to do it, do it. I mean, whether it's a gradual implementation, and, and when I, when I first started, I'm thinking, you know, if, if you're going to do it, do it over time. Let's get, you know, ease into this, everybody can get on board. And, but then I'm thinking, but what does that do to the students who this is affecting? They don't have their identity. They don't have a Redskins identity. They don't have a new logo identity. They're just Anderson. And that, you know, that's one of the costs, that's one of those soft costs. If a change is going to be made, it should be made.
Okay, so are you making a recommendation or not, Dave? I, I will tell you, there's seven of us here. We don't need a fifth meeting, and that doesn't mean I know what the outcome here is, because I haven't heard from you all, but we need to make a decision what we're doing here. I'm talking to everybody.
I still don't like the transition. I think if, if the change has to be made, it has to be made, and there is no, over three years. It's, it's got to be done. And I know you want to keep history, but I had heard that when Miami, Ohio made that change, there's no Redskins in Miami. They're gone. So, there's talk also of, "We should do the same. If we're not the Redskins anymore, we get rid of the Redskins."
But I, but, but that doesn't accomplish anything. It, I mean, that takes away the history and the tradition that we're trying to maintain as well. I mean, I don't want to take away from those of us who were Redskins, and then to invalidate the fact that we were Redskins. This is about the evolving, you know, whether this is an evolving issue, you know, whether, you know, it's the diversity and inclusion and all of that, but, you know...
So, I see that academic, but even in the gym, when you walk in the gym, you're going to have a whole line of orange and black flags that say Redskins with the big Redskins head on it, and the ones underneath will have whatever on the bottom of theirs. So, you're going to have two sets of flags fly in the gym forever?
We want to maintain the history and tradition, yes.
Yeah.
And those people that set those records, who won those awards, were Redskins at the time. I don't see, I mean, you said it, Andy, at our very first meeting, you don't change I don't disagree with that. But going forward, we'd be something else. I've made a recommendation. I mean, you all can choose to modify it or pass on it.
I mean, you know, you know that I, I, I can't go along with that from the cost perspective. So, I, because I simply don't know where it would come from. So, I, in that respect, I don't know if my recommendation would be to postpone this discussion, which everyone's going to say you're kicking the can down the road, but maybe it's re-engaged at a different date, with a different circumstance. I, I'm sorry. I remember I told you at the beginning, there's no win, there's no win-win here. Everyone's going to lose. It's just, accept that. The, the truth of the matter is, the practicality is, that the money isn't there to get it done. And I wish, trust me, everyone who knows me well knows I'm a dreamer. I love to think, I love to wish and dream that we could all agree on this exact same thing, and that's a dreamer's world. But we live in reality, and this will cost money that we don't have. So, do we, does that mean you put it off two years? I, I don't know what that is.
Well, look, if we're not going to do it, we're not going to bind some future board on when they have to decide it or not decide it later. And it's just, we just can't. You can't bind a future board. We have authority to make decisions as, now, this committee, but our Board of Education has authority to make decisions on what becomes, comes before them today, and not two years from now.
Well, I can't support the recommendation for a number of reasons, and I certainly don't think that fundraising is a realistic option. I just can't imagine people will support that. Not enough people. And I don't, and I look at those dollar figures, and I'm, I'm not convinced that that's enough money anyway. And you know what? Really, it's, it's almost like, what's your price? You know? What's your price?
It's not a price or cost, Andy, but I understand and respect your opinion.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking at it from the other way, too, like, and I just think that we're not ready to do that as a neighborhood, and we're, and we can't pay for it. So, I, I can't support the recommendation.
I, I think the regardless of the cost issue, and I, I kind of poo-pooed the cost issue in the first meeting, and then I took it back the second meeting, because it is important. Money is important, obviously. Because you all, the board, and we all are stewards of the taxpayers' money. But if you take that out of it, take the cost out of it, just for argument's sake, I really don't think, I don't think this committee, and I don't think this community has the will to do this. I, I, I mean, it hurts me to say it. I'll, I'll tell you why, I'll tell you why it hurts me to say it. It hurts me to say it for the three things that I've been thinking about and that I have questions on. Because I, I can't, I think, I think we're, we're going there. I just think that, you talked about changing, where the change needs to come from is not those folks, because they, they, I mean, the, the, the change needs to come from these folks, and they're not there. They're not there. It's not a criticism of y'all, believe me. It's not. It's not. It's not. It's accurate. It's, the will is not there to do it. It's, I don't sense the will's here. And we can say, we can say, "Well, we don't have the money," or "We need school resource officers," or "We can't get the money through fundraising." Implementing it gradually, I completely agree. The schools that we talked to, and I would bet you others, say, "You've got to rip that Band-Aid off. You've got to just do it." So, the gradual implementation, it either has to be all or nothing.
All right. So, I'm not going to put anyone else on the spot. The job of this committee was to have a discussion and consider whether a change is going to be made. The will of this committee is not to make that recommendation unless I'm hearing you Anybody want to say anything else?
Your, first of all, the cost is, the very first meeting, that was the very first thing I said. I was concerned about the cost, because we know about our budget. That's been discussed enough so far, but that's an absolute concern that I have. Your recommendation would turn it over to a group, primarily students.
Supervised by this or some other committee to be appointed, yes.
The way Goshen did it, I thought, was masterful. They had three committees, one for public relations, one for voting on the new whatever, and they had three, and I think one was maybe financial. And there was an advisor or two on each of those student-run committees. There was an advisor, an adult advisor on each of those student-run committees. They did it really well, and you remember the Goshen principal said, "I'll come down and help you through it." He was great.
In your recommendation, though, you ruled out allowing Redskins to be retained. And what I'd like to see is, whether it's a survey or something, to see where do people really stand? I've had conversations with students, with faculty, and I think I know where they stand, but I'm not sure. Part of that is, when you've got an opportunity to share your opinion on a confidential basis, sometimes people share a little bit, it's more of an honest opinion, and I wish there was some...
Can I offer something real quick on that? So, through this whole process, I've been as active as I can in taking in all of the information from the community, from both sides, and there's one instance where each side put out a poll. And it's funny to me, because each of the other sides got wind of their poll, and so they told everybody to go vote on this poll, and honestly, before both polls were taken down the same day, the results were almost identical. And it was 65 keep, 35 change. And that comes down to the point of, you know, where is our percentage going to be? And honestly, I think whatever poll, if it's going to include Redskins, it's probably going to be 65-35. That's just my, and that's, but that's just my opinion.
Which, again, isn't that troubling? I mean...
It is to me, but...
Isn't that troubling? That's what I said. Isn't it troubling? But you know what?
It is.
Democracy is a real easy way to say, it's an excuse. I'm sorry, it is. I mean, and I am not, excuse me, I'm speaking. I'm speaking. So, thank you very much. So, democracy's all well and good, but there have been times when the majority has been wrong, right? I am not a flaming liberal. Please do not call me that. I am not. I am not at all. I mostly vote Republican, okay? But, I'm telling you that there are times when the majority's wrong, so don't just say it's democracy. We would still have slavery.
And I actually want to follow that, because that's one reason that this has been so difficult for me. I told you, I'm typically a conservative person, and this issue has ended up being political lines, which it shouldn't be, because this is an issue of humanity. And in my heart of hearts, a lot of the advice people gave me was, "Follow your heart. What is your heart telling you to do?" It tells me to help get this community to a different place eventually. So, that needs to be said, and I wanted that to follow you, because you and I are in the same boat, and you can't accuse me of any of that political pressure, or liberalism, or anything like that. This is simply a matter of compassion and inclusion and care. And we care for children. That's why this is on the table. So, that's why I always say it's complicated.
All right. So, and stop me if you want to, but I don't hear it being the will of this committee that we recommend a change now. All right? So, at the next regularly-scheduled Board of Education meeting, as the chair of this committee, I will advise the Board of Education that this committee did not recommend any change at this time, and the Board of Education... The Board of Education can decide to take up the issue if it's so inclined at some later date or not. So, before we close for the evening, I do want to thank everyone for, one, their time, two, for their caring, for their passion, for their constant, if not continuous, input for patience. I take nothing personally, although I sure as heck have received plenty of it, and that's okay. We have six other members of this committee who gave freely of themselves. They all worked to try to get the best result we could for the community. Regardless of whichever position they took, they were here for all the right reasons. We did this all in the right way. Respect them. Respect the time and the effort they put into this process. And to my committee members, I all told you it would be tough. I don't think there's the same thing about knowing the process will be difficult and enduring it. I know it has cost all of you many sleepless nights. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your willingness to serve.
Jim, before you close, and it sounds like you're pretty close there.
Yep.
I want to thank you. You took on a tough job. And by the way, this guy, this practice of the Board of Education is whoever's the president answers emails that are sent to the entire board. But Jim Fruman, I believe, answered every one of them. I have, my file folder was so full, I have no idea how many emails we got. But he's still practicing attorney, and would you say, how many billable hours do you think this cost you? But anyway, no, seriously, I want to thank you for your diligence, your consistency, and your professionalism in how you did manage tough questions sometimes, but how you managed this committee. Something, sometimes at meetings, Jim will share with the public a lot of the work that goes on behind the scenes. This whole committee did a lot of work. Board members will spend 10, 15, sometimes 20 hours a week, if you include attending meetings, in doing their work. It's not just when you see board members show up at a board meeting and casting a vote. It's a lot more effort. And by the way, there's no salary for this job, and there've been weeks that I spent more than 25 hours doing Board of Education or OSBA work. So, again, thank you for what you have done. Again, taking on a tough job, when my understanding was, nobody else would take this on as the chair, so, thank you.
And thank you all. Appreciate you coming. Good night.